Okay, we're live now.
And you let everybody in who?
Yes, they're starting to filter in.
Okay, we should give them a minute then. I see people are adding.
Where do you see that?
Participants, attendees, I think it says.
Yeah.
Well, holy moly.
Well, there's six of us and then six attendees. And they seem to have stopped adding, so why don't we open the meeting? It's the August 11th, 2020, meeting of the Larchsboro Planning Commission. We are now in session. We have a roll call.
Yes, I'm just gonna read it off the agenda.
That works.
Vice Chair Brock Whitestaff.
Present.
Daniel Kuntzler.
Present.
Jeffrey Switzer is absent. We know this because he's already checked in with us. Natasha Chalmers.
Present.
And Chair Taver.
Thank you. Is there any member of the public that would like to speak on anything that's not on the agenda? There is only one agenda item, which is 40 Holly. So does anyone, if you want to, raise your virtual hand?
Do we see any hands, Erin?
I don't see any.
No, no hands raised.
Okay, then we will move on to the Planning Director's Report.
Okay, we just have a couple short things. We're having next here. The general plan, another general plan update meeting will be held this coming Monday, August 17th. It'll focus on the circulation element and largely be done in a study session format. He thinks it will be a fairly quick meeting. I know one of you attends. I think that's Mr. Kuntzler, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, so after that, the next focus will be on completing the land use element. And he hopes to have this all wrapped up in the draft general plan prepared for public hearings come this fall. So there's the status of that. And he just wanted me to update you sort of on our activities. The planning department has seen a down trending in planning department applications for discretionary permits. We are only at application number 31 for this year and we're halfway through August, which is unusual, but considering the times we're in, not unexpected. However, we are seeing a big upswing in building permits, a very strong surge in building permits. A lot of people have, I think, instead gone to really working with what they have and remodeling their existing conditions. And proposing small additions that are exempt from public hearing review, like the one-time 200 square foot addition or something. So that's been keeping us very busy. We also have taken on the responsibility for processing tree removal permits. Erin is our primary planner who's been assisting in that end. It's a lot of busy work, but generally, if there are protests at this point, they will still be heard by the Park and Rec Commission, which has been the practice in the past. They are reluctant to give up that duty. So that's pretty much what we're up to today. And I am not, I don't have anything else right now to report. Do you have any questions?
Okay, I don't. So we will move on to the one public hearing item that we have, which is 40 Holly Avenue. That's design review, floor area ratio exception, variance for the front yard setback and variance for the side yard setback, 20-22. And again, it's 40 Holly Avenue. Could we have a staff report?
Thank you, Chair Taver. Okay, the subject site's a moderately sloping 7,770 square foot parcel with a 19% average grade. A seasonal creek runs through the rear third of the parcel or a quarter of the parcel. And the site's improved currently with an existing 1960s era split level, single-family home with the two-car garage. The current residence exceeds the FAR due to the slope of the lot. And it's non-conforming to the front and west side setbacks due to minor encroachments. It's also only has three onsite parking spaces currently where four are required for a single-family home. The applicants propose to substantially demolish the existing structure and only the garage walls and slab part of the lower floor and the existing foundation would remain. They would then, they also propose construction of a new residence on these features that remain that would largely occupy the same building footprint. Its style would be a contemporary, contemporary, modern architectural design, very clean lines and flat roofs. At the rear, the plan includes a two-story expansion that would project approximately four feet, not quite that far, beyond the original building footprint. Proposed exterior materials include horizontal lapsed siding in dark gray, Marvin wood windows in dark gray or black, wood fascias painted dark gray and a composite rear deck with an IPE finish, which is sort of a chestnut color, with black steel railings. Decorative artistic patterned wall with light gray tile in gray tones and a natural wood door would accent the front entry porch. And the applicant has proposed to widen the existing driveway to accommodate two onsite parking spaces. So now it will bring it into conformance with four onsite spaces as required for a single-family home. Generally, the proposed residence and finished materials appear to be attractive and compatible with the range of the housing styles in this particular neighborhood. The proposed design would continue to present a low single-story profile from when viewed from the street and would not result in any notable increase in bulk enassing from the existing residence. Homes along Holly and Willow Avenue generally are configured in a side-by-side arrangement where their primary windows are facing out front towards the roadway and to their rear yards. On the west side, where the structure encroaches eight feet into the required setback, the proposed roof line remains low, measuring 12 feet at the front and 18 feet at the rear. And the west wall has no windows facing towards the adjacent neighbor at 40 Sycamore and their rear yard and pool. Additionally, the proposed rear expansion has stepped in approximately 14 feet off the west side lot line. On the east side, the home has provided a 16-foot side yard setback from 35 Holly. And at the rear, it's separated from the property at 30 Sycamore by the creek and a substantial amount of vegetation. Based on these factors, the proposed new residence does not appear to create a significant or unreasonable loss or interference with privacy, light, solar access, and prominent scenic views from adjacent properties. With regard to the requested floor area ratio exception, the proposed residence would be 2986 square feet with a .38 FAR, where code permits 2408 square feet and a .31 FAR due to the slope. This proposal is within the range of FARs for the neighborhood. And it appears to be compatible and in scale with the site and the surrounding properties. The proposed expansion of the building footprint is at the rear where it slopes downhill. This elevation is partially visible from Sycamore and some adjacent houses along Sycamore, but it's also well-distanced from the surrounding homes and does not appear to be overly large in comparison with surrounding development. The commission probably has noted that attached to your staff report was a letter of concern from the property owner of 40 Sycamore, along with some pictures. I visited the site and took some photographs myself from her kitchen window, which is located on the east side of the home, sort of centrally on the house, and pretty much looks straight down the creek corridor. It's quite attractive. She can also look up to the north and see over the home at 35 Willow. And above that, just is a small view, an obscured view of some treetops and part of a home up there on the hillside. The commission should take this concern into consideration. She values that view on the uphill side, looking up over the top of Willow, and she would like that to be protected and preserved. With regard to the requested variances, as previously noted, the northwest of the front corner of the garage and the west side building wall maintain modest encroachments into the required setbacks. The applicants propose to reuse the same building footprint and maintain these modest encroachments. With regard to the front setback, the use of the third of the rear of the property really is restricted by the existence of the creek. And requiring the new home to be pushed further back to fully accommodate a 20-foot setback could have negative impacts on the creek and the creek bank's stability. And it would result in a very small rear yard that's left for them to be able to use. It's also important to note that the house is fronted by an additional 12 feet of unimproved right-of-way. Holly Avenue is only partially improved to its full width. So the real setback when measured from the edge of the roadway is closer to 30 feet, which provides or meets the intent of a 20-foot front yard setback, which is to have an open street corridor and vegetative front yards. With regard to the side setback, the existing building footprint and setback currently fit into the pattern of development established for the subject site and surrounding neighborhood, some of which also have non-conforming setbacks at the front and side as well. Requiring the applicant to demolish the lower level and foundation remaining on the site and move it eight inches would not really accomplish any notable change and would be a bit of a hardship on them financially. With regard to the, based on this, staff believes that the strict application of this title would deprive the property of privileges enjoyed by other properties in the vicinity in the R1 zoning district, namely, the ability to maintain and work within existing built conditions on the site. And approval of the requested variance would not constitute a grant of special privilege inconsistent with other properties in the vicinity as the proposed development would maintain the established pattern of development on the site and its relationship to surrounding properties. Staff recommends the planning commission approve the project as proposed. If the commission agrees with this recommendation, we've provided you with the findings and conditions of approval for your consideration. If the commission determines that some modification might be necessary to accommodate the concerns of 40 Sycamore Avenue, we recommend you continue the project to a date uncertain and request the applicant ask for a one-time 90-day extension of time. So the continuance should be based on the finding that you can request minor modifications to the design in order to mitigate the impacts. If you find that there are major changes that are necessary, it might be best to deny the application. That concludes staff report.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Kristen?
Yeah, I do. Thank you, Kristen. That was great. Can you just talk a little to the requirements about how views are protected and what rights there are and what it's actually saying in the code?
Well, the code is looking for significant and unreasonable impact on primary views from somebody's home. They use both significant and reasonable because you're trying to mitigate the property owner of one lot's ability to make improvements, you know, with the other property owners' existing comfort level and how their homes are related to each other.
Okay, so views, like, they're not absolutely protected. It just has to be a significant impact.
Well, it's difficult to achieve alteration to a home without some impact. So we're looking for something that results in a significant or unreasonable impact that would be unfair to impose on the neighbor. And that's the question, if that is the case. So in this case, the home is distanced quite a bit from the property. And I didn't find, in viewing the story polls, that she would suffer an unreasonable impact on light or air. It seems the primary issue would be whether or not that view over the top of 35 Willow is a significant view that should be protected in the design modified to protect it. This is the, wait, stop. This is the view down the, this is her view from the kitchen window over 35 Willow. And you can see in the background the trees. And if we zoomed in, you could see a little bit of a house up there. Her primary view is in the next shot. Keep going down. Which is, this is the primary view out the window where you're looking down the creek quarter.
Oh, I see. Okay, so this is from her house, too.
Yeah, this is from the middle of the side of her house.
This isn't impacted at all by the.
No, this is not impacted at all.
Great.
It would be the uphill view.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Shall we open it up and ask the applicant if they would like to present anything?
Is he there?
Yeah, I'm not sure which one of these.
Okay, Ned, you should be able to unmute yourself.
I think he may have disconnected himself.
I moved him over to panelist.
Oh, you did?
Hello? Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Sorry about that.
Like, to put yourself on video, you can as well.
Okay, let's see. Let's do that. Start the video. There I am. Hi, everybody. My name's Ned White. I'm an architect. I've been a long-term Larchsboro resident and have practiced in Marin County for over 20 years. The more important members of the design team are the owners, Vince Hayes, who's also a long-term Marin County resident, and Pamela Hayes, who also is an interior designer. And I think, interestingly, was a resident of Okinawa, Japan for six years of her youth. There's a little hint of that in our design. I thought I'd give you a little insight into our approach. Our personal goals for the project were to provide a simple design, something that was clean and contemporary, respectful of the neighborhood, compatible with the neighborhood, but wasn't afraid to be a little bit different than what we see every day. Goals were to keep the home small. Vince and Pamela had been in a slightly larger home, and they liked the idea of being in a small home. I think our goals for the neighborhood and community are along those lines as well. We actually reduced the square footage of the home by 126 square feet over what's currently existing. I think that's unusual, probably, for most of the projects that you see. We reduced the FAR from .40 to .38. We also removed some of the mass and bulk of the roof and brought it down in a lot of parts. Of course, it's a flat roof now versus a pitched roof, so it's hard to describe exactly how that's happened in every circumstance, but there is less bulk and less mass than there was before. We've also increased the rear yard setback to the creek, probably by, I don't have that number on the tip of my tongue, but I think it's probably about nine feet greater. We've added four feet to the existing home, and the existing projection is about 12 feet. So I'm gonna say eight or nine feet. We've increased that rear yard setback. We've preserved all the other setbacks, setbacks to the side, setback to the front. Did want to comment on that front setback encroachment. It's really just clipping a tiny bit of the existing garage. I think the square footage involved is about four square feet on the northwest corner of the garage that is currently encroaching on that front yard setback. So not a huge problem. It's not clear whether the building was, we've got existing plans from 1966 that show the intent was to build it 20 feet off the front yard setback. And the intent was to build it six feet off that west side yard setback. And by current surveying methods and by a 2005 agreement between neighbors, those property lines have been adjusted. And now it looks like we're not in conformance by current standards, but I think at the time, it was intended to do so. On the sides of the building that are closest to our neighbors, we have maintained low wall heights. We've got eight-foot plate heights, which are the same as existing on the bedroom wing and also on the garage wing. So we've done our best to be respectful of our neighbors in that regard. And we've actually removed bulk on those two roofs by making a flat roof. We've also decreased the existing overhangs of the roof. Currently, they're 24-inch overhangs on that bedroom wing and the garage wing. We've reduced those to 16 inches. So we've actually pulled back the structure in that regard. As Kristen mentioned, and thank you for that good introduction to our project, we have agreed and volunteered to increase the parking to meet current standards. And just back to our goals for interacting with the community and the neighborhood, we're adding extensive front porch that we think will increase interpersonal relations and, you know, discussions, interaction with our neighbors and people up and down the street. And that's a popular street for pedestrians, as we know. So we're attempting to bring a new modest and respectful home to the neighborhood. Just a couple of quick comments on some of the concerns that Kristen mentioned. As we all know, the allowable height for single-family residents in Larchsboro is 30 feet. From our backyard with our new design, our highest point from the lowest measurement of topography is 22 feet. And so, you know, we think we've done what we can. And that's over a two-story portion of the home is only 22 feet tall. So we really think like we've done everything we can to keep the scale down, which is our goal. And yeah, I guess in regards to the variances, I did mention that small clipped corner. And then on the west side, it is eight inches encroaching. And once again, that's due to, potentially due to, you know, construction being a little bit off back in 1966. That's all I have for now. Back to you.
Thank you. Does anybody have questions?
I've got, yeah, I've got, I've got one, one question. The lower floor, the first floor, that configuration where you have a guest bedroom and an office, I think that the total of that floor, not including the storage area, is approximately 500 square feet. Does that sound about right to you, Mr. White?
That sounds about right. Yeah, I'd have to check that.
Yeah, because it strikes me that should the owners at some point wish to accommodate it, this would work as an auxiliary unit. Did you guys give any thought to that as a future possibility?
Vince and Pamela have two daughters, and one is a young adult. One is living at home. I think they plan primarily to use the entire home themselves. Pamela works from home as an interior designer. And so that office would be primarily for her.
No, I understand that. I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to elicit a comment of how they're gonna use their home. It's their home. It's more, you know, if you've given any thought to some point in the future, either current owners or future owners, whether you put into the design the possibility of creating an ADU, if that should become desirable or appropriate in the future.
Yeah, there is, there's an interior connecting stair. So, you know, of course, that could be modified and changed. So I suppose that's possible. It's not really on the radar right at this time.
Okay, thank you.
But I'm glad that you mentioned the downstairs and the square footage because, you know, in terms of FAR, we are, we've got that storage area, and that's existing. It's not really desired by the owners. It's something that, you know, kind of came with the house. The ceiling height there is only seven feet four, seven feet five. So it's too low to be habitable space, but it's too tall not to count as FAR. So we've got about 333 square feet of space in that lower level that's really not gonna be utilized, but is counting towards our FAR numbers, just so you know.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Ned, this is Brock. I had a quick question, a couple of quick questions. On the south elevation, I see a door going to a deck, and it looks like there's a door going to space. Or is that a window that's matching the door?
Yeah, on that southeast corner.
Right.
That, that is a window off the stair landing. And so that is fixed glass, not operable. And the only operable unit to that deck is that door.
But it shows as an operating, it shows as an operating window slash door, whatever.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I guess I can't operate the mouse here. But are you talking about the operational unit at the center of the two large fixed pieces of glass?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's intended, that is a window. And it may need to have a restrictor in terms of safety because it does come right down to the ground.
Yeah, I like the symmetry. I just didn't want anybody to fall to the ground.
Yeah, thank you.
And I didn't know whether you were gonna extend the deck at some point. And then.
No, actually, I'm sorry to interrupt. But yeah, our goal was to come through that front door and have sort of an unobstructed view through those large windows and not see that, you know, 42-inch-tall guardrail. So that's sort of why we tucked that deck around the corner and behind the stairway.
Yeah. And is the siding a charred siding? Is that what I'm looking at?
It is, yes. It's by the Nokamoto Company.
Yeah. I always wanted to use it and never could find any clients to do it, so. And you have a, is that a stucco base? Just, I'm just.
It is, yes.
Okay. All right. That's, I was just curious.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you, Ned. I will open it up to other members of public who'd like to speak. Okay, it looks like Vince has his hand up.
Okay. Vince, you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Can you hear us now?
Yes.
Okay.
So hi, Vince and Pamela Hayes, the owners. And, you know, I just wanted to address the concerns at 40 Sycamore and just, you know, share, you know, how, how much we really tried to minimize the impact of the enassing of the home to the neighborhood and also respect the creek bed. And if you were to look at the existing, I guess, elevation, if you were looking west, the existing west elevation, you can see on the right side, the south side, that, that existing, let's see, yep, yep, down in the right corner there, you can see that that current addition that was added, I think in the 70s, extends out almost 12 feet. And that's where we're proposing we reduce that to the three foot seven inch along the back of the house. And we feel that's gonna open up a lot of sunlight. The way the sun comes across the property, it's gonna create some beautiful sunlight on the back of the house. I would think that for 40 Sycamore, it would offer a beautiful corridor with the unobstructed views because that enassing won't be there any longer. with the unobstructed views because that massing won't be there any longer. And yeah, I think that's, that's all I wanted to say. And then we, Ned and I and my husband, we really worked hard not to, you know, put the place any windows on the west side because the property line is so close and we wanted to be respectful of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak?
I'm sorry?
I was just asking if there's anybody else from the public who would like to speak. There are still a few other people I see on here who haven't spoken.
No, don't see any hands raised.
Okay. Then I will close the public and open it up to the commissioners for comment. And I'm gonna start with Natasha this time.
Again. Sure, okay. So here are my thoughts on this. Regarding the variances, I thought that there was no branch, any special privilege. They seemed reasonable and I was okay to approve those. Regarding the floor area ratio, the fact that they're putting in additional parking and the plan clearly doesn't show any other building on the lot. So I think we can achieve the findings for the FAR exception. I did hesitate a little bit on the design review section on this, partly because of the comments on the, from the neighbor from 40 Sycamore and the how it will affect her view. When I looked at the picture and I actually tried to go down and see the site and there's different high walls around it, you can't you can't see too much there. I see that it will, the addition on the roof will cover a portion, but it will, it actually seems to be there was a prior, there's another roof that's a little bit that's there and it will just kind of run along that same line. Although admittedly, the roof next door is a lot closer. So I hear the objections from the neighbor at 40 Sycamore. I was thinking if that was her only view and main sort of only source of light, that would be quite a considerable kind of something we should talk about. But it sounds like Chet has a lovely view from another window that Kristin shared. So I guess I'm less concerned about that now. And then the only other comment I had was the, and I, it's in my language is not quite correct here, but the kind of modern gray look. I didn't actually see any other houses in that neighborhood with that same coloring and that same very modern look, but I actually think it works and I do like it. And I think that sight and the little trees in front, that would actually look really good. So I'm curious to hear what the other commissioners have to say for those of my comments.
Thank you. Daniel?
Thank you. You know, I pretty much agree with what Commissioner Chalmers had to, had to say. Certainly I'm there with regards to the floor area ratio and the two, the two variances which, that had been, that had been proposed. I really don't see any, any issue there, particularly given the sort of the legacy conditions that this property is subjected to and that were very well laid out by, by Kristin. So that, that brings us back to the, to the design review and certainly in situations where, where neighbors have voiced some concern, I think we owe it to ourselves and to them and to the applicant to be very, very attentive to, to what they have to say. So like Natasha, I feel I, I have been. And I think Kristin laid out what the, what the actual criteria are to, to make the findings. And there is a test, there's not an absolute test of you cannot even minimally obstruct more than is currently the case. The view of a neighbor, but rather it's a test of reasonableness. So is what is being proposed something that normally the, the neighborhood should be able to to live with without, without undergoing any kind of major, major sacrifice. So that's kind of where I come down on this, where I bring everything together and say, well, look, I mean, this is a, it's a home of modest dimensions, a home of modest profile. It's a home that's, that is, that's inviting to, to the neighborhood, particularly with the with the addition of the front porch, which, which does contribute to a sense of community. So I think that's very much, you know, in keeping with what the prerogatives of the, of the city are. So rolling all that into, into, you know, essentially an opinion, I think I can make, I can in fact make the findings that the, that the roof line does actually pass a test of reasonableness, given the other qualities of the design. So that's where I am.
Thank you. Brock?
I tend to agree with what's been said so, so far. I think it's gonna be a very interesting house. I think objectively the impact to the neighbors relatively minimal. And moving a foundation eight inches doesn't make any sense. So I can make the findings there and I, my only question would be, and I'm looking forward to seeing it, assuming it gets built, is the staff report said muted gray tones. It's gonna be a pretty dark house. I think it'll be handsome, but it's, it's an unusual color scheme. So that's just my thoughts.
Thank you. I actually really, really like the design. So I'm looking forward to seeing it because I, I think, I think it'll be quite handsome and a little different. And I guess I'm really appreciating the effort that was made to actually make it slightly smaller than the existing house and to not expand the footprint and build on what was there. I did go to the site. I did try to look to see what the impact of views would be and probably the photographs tell it better than what I could really see. But the major impact seems to be just roof, treetops really is what you can see. And it's not, when I think of a major impact, it's more like blocking a view of Mount Tam or something like that. And it feels like this doesn't really fall into that sort of impact. So I don't feel like it's, it's, it falls into the, you know, the major impact category. So I couldn't, I think I can, I can make the findings for approval. So would somebody like to make a motion?
Don't all talk at once. Okay, I'll move to, I'll move for approval of design review floor area ratio exception of the two variances. Number 20 dash 22 for 40 Holly Avenue.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 I think that was four ayes and we have Commissioner Swisher is absent. So that was four in favor and one absent. And for anyone who might want to appeal, there is a 10-day appeal period through City Council. Otherwise, congratulations on a nice project. Okay. Moving on. We need approval of the July 28 meeting minutes.
Can I ask a question about the July 28 meeting? I'm wondering what happened with, I think we gave 32 LaCuesta two weeks to commit to whether they were moving ahead or maybe Kristin knows what they decided.
You know, Neil has been working with the consulting planner on that, but to the best of my knowledge, they have not revised the design or approached us with the, to have a meeting or discussion with the revised design. So
It did say that the daughter was gonna go back to her parents and ask them what they wanted to.
Yeah. So we're still in a waiting pattern for them to follow through on your direction. And if we get no response, then eventually we'll have to reschedule for hearing for you to make a decision on the design as proposed.
Okay, that's what I was curious about.
So is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I will move, we approve the minutes.
I'll second. I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, I think that was four in favor. And again, Commissioner Swisher is, is absent. Are there any planning commissioner reports? I am not hearing any. So I think the last thing of the day is to move to adjourn. If anybody would like to do that. Is there a second?
Okay, I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, we are adjourned.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Kristin.
Yeah.
Yeah, good job, Kristin. That was a good report.
Yeah.
Bye.
Bye bye.
Bye.
Good night, everyone.